Swear I didn't.
You're Latin American.
There we go. All right, good evening and welcome to the city council study session of September 6th, 2022. First on the agenda is an update from Dr. David McLeod, Associate Director of the University of Oklahoma School of Social Work regarding the police use of force and school resource officers. Dr. McLeod.
All right, just jumping right into it. Well, thanks for having me over. I wanted to be kind of informal and give a little bit of a brief overview of some of the different partnerships and programs that we've had going on with the police department over the past couple of years to kind of set the stage and help folks understand where we're coming to and how we came to be a part of this. We've got one report that I can talk in detail about particularly related to use of force data that we looked at, and I'll kind of go over some highlights of that and then talk about some preliminary things that we found particularly with school resource officer data here and how that compares and contrasts with national trends. We've got a lot of other stuff. I'd be glad to, I mean, I'm a professor, I'll keep talking as I'm. So whatever you want. I view this as a community service, so whatever I can do to try to help shed light on the data, I'm really glad to. So I first started working with this police department, I want to say it was definitely pre-COVID, but probably closer around four-ish years ago, connected by one of the other faculty members in our School of Social Work who knew that my research area is particularly in forensic psychopathology and the development of violent or criminal behavior. I am a former police detective and SWAT officer myself before I became a forensic social worker and then later on a researcher. So I've seen these phenomenon from a lot of different angles and then really post, a lot of folks might remember the events in Ferguson, Missouri. Post that time, decided to start reaching out and also trying to help in some sort of translational activities with different law enforcement agencies, criminal justice system to kind of help provide information and resources where I can that could help folks work toward modernization and kind of cleaning up some of the issues that we're grappling with as a national community. So got in with Norman about four years ago, particularly we were looking at that time with mental health services. I think we've seen police departments over the past, really, couple of decades, but we're seeing it a lot more in our communities now, police departments dealing with mental health crises. So at that time, we were talking specifically and trying to think through technology and are there ways that we could utilize existing reporting techniques to try to route different cases or people to mental health services? That kind of, we stopped, we were working on that and COVID comes along, right? So everything changed during COVID and it really was after COVID when we, or not after COVID, I don't know if we're even really after COVID yet, but as that was starting to, as we were processing through that and becoming more normal in our daily lives, we started working particularly on this use of force data as well. So I'm sure that everyone has become familiar with the CPE reports and all of the work that was done to try to understand use of force particularly within that context. At that time, the chief and the administration of the police department wanted to understand not only is this here and to what degree is this here, but where specifically is this happening in our process and as we engage in the community? And are there specific things that we can learn more about it or know more about it so that we can understand why it's happening and what we need to do to make sure that we're policing in a way that's equitable and represents our community? So we started unpacking that data. I started working on that specifically with the data, the exact data sets, the open data sets that I literally think that it was scary. One of the, the technical support officers was able to give me the exact data sets that were given to CPE. And I started trying to unpack those and understand why and how and where these phenomenon were happening. So I think that my work is not necessarily in contrast to CPE's work as much as it is to try to understand not just does it exist, it's where, why, how, how do we pick that really apart? So we already knew that what they're finding, we had some idea that their findings were going to show that we had a disproportionate number of people that were interacting or that were involved in use of force scenarios, but that was kind of the end of it. And I don't know if you remember, if you're familiar, I actually met with CPE folks as well and talked about the specific model that they used. So you used a very specific regression model, which is just a mathematical way to try to understand if we have this many people in the population, we should expect logically to see a variation in our data set that looks like the variation in the community? And when we don't see that variation, can we explain that with other variables? So what they found in theirs is that there was a large part that they could explain with variables, for example, like economic variables, but there was also a piece of that puzzle that was not explained with the other variables. So we knew that that, there was that disparity that was documented, we were able to explain some of that or at least make sense of some of that, looking at some different stuff, but then others we couldn't. So that was kind of the groundwork. Then we came in and started picking it apart and I wanted to look at specifically, can we identify the context of where a lot of these things are happening? Where is use of force actually happening? Is it at the officer level, for example? So we broke down by lots of different demographic characteristics of our officers that were involved in that five years' worth of use of force reports. And I'll kind of wisp through several of these, but for example, it did not have any type of mediating effect. So officer age, the amount of time they had spent on the job, officer gender, officer race, none of those things appeared to be statistically significant contributors to that disparity. Continue to unpack it and try to, are there things about those calls, for example, that, where we can see where this was happening? And this was a particularly important variable for me because there's a reality in the way that police departments respond in the community. Some, some activities are officer initiated and other activities are dispatch initiated. People call, ask, and you respond. Right? So what we found as we broke it down, the types of calls, we were able to identify specifically three types of calls in the data where there was a racial disparity that was statistically significant. Those were fight calls, disturbance calls, and I believe it was suspicious persons as well. Didn't do much investigation on suspicious persons because that one was actually a higher than normal representation of white citizens. So that wasn't specifically connected to our particular research questions. So, and I think that probably is more highly connected to things, issues like mental health and probably influenced by some other things that are like policy related.
What do you mean by there's a disproportionate amount of white people that call? Explain that, I don't understand what you mean by that.
So the easiest example would be, so let's say that the city of Norman was 100 people and that in that 100 people, we had, let's say, six of those people were African-American, five of those people were Latino, and the rest of our population was classified as white, for lack, in this where our data ends up being a lot of times, even though we know there's.
The suspicious persons calls specifically?
Specifically.
Yes.
So when, an overrepresentation would be if we know that we have seven, if, if only theoretically 80% of our population is white, but then we saw 85% of our suspicious persons calls were people that were white, then that would be an overrepresentation.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So people that were, are suspicious.
I understood what he said.
Okay. So, and this was, keep it in mind too, that this data, both the data that I looked at and the CPE looked at, were all coming from use of force reports. So that's also another thing. We don't know when the events that didn't cause force, we don't know exactly what happened in those. In fact, a lot, that's a pretty normal phenomenon in policing data because we don't tend to record as much about events where a friendly or non-confrontational exchange happens, but we do have to record pretty thoroughly events where things like use of force happen. So I think that context of what the data is and what we can say from it is important. The, the two areas that were by far more significant were fight and disturbance calls. And I want to put a pin in that for just a second and I'll come right back to it. An important thing to understand with this data as well was that there were multiple kind of truths that we found in this data set. One of those was that use of force does not happen in our community with near the volume that we might think it does. The vast, vast, I would even go to the extra vast, right? Amount of police citizen interactions do not culminate in a use of force scenario. That is true from the data. Also true, we saw, like, when it does happen, we saw that overrepresentation of people of color, more than we should see. That doesn't mean most use of force was involving a person of color. It just means that in our community, people of color are relatively small portion of our population and we're seeing them more than we would think mathematically we should see, right? That is neither, that is just what it is, right? And we found that specifically is present in those fight and disturbance calls. Why that's happening, at that point, we're past data and we have to get into more of a theoretical exploration as to why that might be.
Are you able to see the fight calls that were called for people that were not black and what the use of force was with, with those people?
So only, I'm only able to look at existing use of force reports.
Right, so whenever you were looking back at your five years of data, because you said specifically the fight calls is what you guys received them, or what MPD received the most calls on.
Not necessarily. That, those are the ones where racial disparity existed.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. So where there's that racial disparity, because the data was 3.4 times more likely to be subjected to a use of force if you were black. So in that data with the fight calls, were you able to see what use of force in the last five years was on people that were white that got called for those same types of calls?
Base rate, she's asking about the base rate.
So if the, it's any, everything in there is, I don't know if I'm explaining correctly.
If we know that black people have uses of force 3.4 times more likely used on them, how often were uses of force done on white people for those same types of calls?
So that's not something that the data is, that's not something that we were looking at in the data. I'm trying to, so like, we were trying to, we're looking at when use of force did happen.
Correct.
Did we see an overrepresentation compared to our general population?
Correct. And so that we're seeing the overrepresentation for people that are black, but I know that a lot of the talking points that the MPD had in retaliation to the information that was presented by CPE was that we don't know the context of the story. So you're giving us a little bit of the context, saying that there were fight calls. Were there similar fight calls for people who were white? And so were there also uses of force there?
Yes.
Because to me, it paints a pretty clarifying picture. If we're getting those same calls on white people and black people that were using force more with black people, that's a story. So I'm curious what your data can show to break that down to make it not look as bad as it looks because 3.4 times more likely to me is a pretty big issue. I don't care if it's one person or 10, it's a big issue.
Yeah, and I certainly would agree with that. It's certainly an issue to a person that's experienced.
Right.
But I also want to be clear that all of the data that I looked at were situations where force happens.
Okay.
So, right, there, there were no data that I had that were cases where use of force didn't happen.
Okay.
One of the things that I did ask the police department to go back and let's identify is how many times did you go to fight or disturbance calls when use of force did not occur?
Okay.
That was not in the original data set. And we were able to go back over that five-year time span and just to put it in context on, on disturbance calls, which are, fight and disturbance calls can be the same, but typically my understanding is that a disturbance call is more like a family disturbance or as a fight call can be, you know, two guys duking it out at the, at the on cue, right? So with disturbance calls, we were over 500 to one. And when we looked at, for every one time that use of force did happen on a call dispatched for a disturbance, it was over 500 times that officers responded and no use of force happened. And on fight calls, it was closer to like 145 to one. So for every 145 times that the police were called to a fight, roughly one of those ended up in a use of force scenario. Yes?
I came in a little late, but did you define what use of force is or did CPE define what use of force is?
So I think for both ours and CPE's, use of force could be a wide spectrum of activities and we didn't have the ability to break down. Are we talking about, so if it's like lethal force, for example, I don't know that that...
More like body slams, so like, mental health was mentioned earlier, so if you had a fight or disturbance call, easily a disturbance call could be somebody with mental health crisis in a Walmart parking lot, for example, and they get body slammed to the ground, would that be considered a use of force?
A use of force would have to be, a use of force report would need to be filled out.
Okay.
My understanding, yes. Tasers, use of force reports have to be filled out for any tasing incidents, but there could be a wide variety of different types of calls that would require a use of force report.
About pepper spray?
That would, pepper spray would, I would expect that that is in there as well. I think it got even more interesting too in the data to try to explore and understand that you may have one situation where use of force occurred, where you might have, say, two officers, and then you may have another situation where you might have six officers, but each officer fills out their own individualized use of force report. So if you don't account for looking at the data, and one of the things we did is to organize the data based on the incident or the citizen and look at it from citizen backwards rather than officer forwards, if that makes sense, so that we could try to understand it with a little bit more context there. We did see that there were high levels of mental health, substance abuse, observations, agitation, lots of different things that were at those scenes.
Were you also able to break down the data by demographics, like where they're located at in the city?
We did not. With more time, we'd probably, I think that'd be a really interesting one to try to look at kind of geolocation.
Yeah.
This is a project that for us was a service, it wasn't a funded project, I couldn't hire staff, so it was kind of grabbing staff that were able to put some, a couple hours on it here or there to try to piece it together as we've gone along. And I think there's some interesting stuff in that. I think at the end of the day, I mean, multiple things came out of the use of force report. Is it there? Does it exist? Do we need to do something about it? Absolutely. But there's also, I think the expectation is that there's a lot of use of force when, I want to say we're close to like 50, 60 events a year. I mean, it's something relatively small compared to what I would have expected to see.
Councilmember Lam.
Yes, sir. Bottom line upfront, going through this, and I don't know if you made this determination or not, did you find anything that led you to believe that race in any way, even though these numbers were different, that it was led by anything in the disparity?
So with the, there's nothing in the data that would tell me, for example, that race was the reason that a use of force incident happened? Is that the question?
That, that's basically it. Was there anything that led you to believe that there was something systematic that was leading these numbers in this direction or those just happened to be the numbers and this is what we could draw out of it?
That's a great question because I, I do think that systematically as a community, probably systematically as one part of our community, like a police department, there's nothing in the data that says it's the police department per se. So I would say that the example that I would give is, let's say theoretically, let's just say that the police department or our education system or our health system or whatever, let's say that they're absolutely perfect. Our Norman education system is absolutely perfect. If we have historical inequity in our community in any way, that could be economic or to any other degree that exists, that would make it a little bit harder for some than it is for others, then even if you take a completely perfect system and place it on top of something that's inequitable, it automatically changes the entry points to that system and then that automatically affects the exit points for that system. So we'll see different experiences in those systems, even if the systems were absolutely perfect. And I don't think anybody would say our systems are absolutely perfect. The data suggests they're pretty good compared to national levels. When we look at the literature and what's going on out there across the country, that our use of force and incidents compared to the literature appear to be really good, as in, we're not seeing very much use of force. But is there, but that's not to say that we shouldn't pay attention to those pockets of inequity and understand how the things impact different people in different communities in different ways.
Councilmember Sugar.
Yeah, so I'm interested in, I guess, the way that this, the outcomes of this or like understanding the gaps and where like, what data you have and what data you don't have, has this changed any recommendations on like how we should keep data moving into the future to get and understand this at a deeper level?
Actually, it has. It's inspired multiple things. So several of the recommendations that we came back to, we met with administration of the police department about, were things that were already in progress or we've actually been able to partner with as we push those forward. So using the data, how do we really engage in our training initiatives in a way that's going to help people understand and react and really get the broader picture of how these things unfold in the community? But it also set a scenario where we realized that we could probably learn a lot more if we had the resources to be able to deeply dig into the data. So in this past funding cycle, I know that we partnered between the School of Social Work, and I'm not the only one there, we have so many great faculty at the School of Social Work at this point are interacting with the police department. So we went after multiple different funding lines. For example, I know we, there's, there's at least, I think notifications come out, even if there's no official anything out yet, let the cat out of the, I know that some VOCA grant funding has been set aside or we're in line for, I say we, but our community is in line for, to create victim advocate positions with the police department where you would embed social workers to help support services there. We knew that that was going to be an important type of activity to do. We actually also submitted a Department of Justice grant, which I've not gotten the review back on yet, I'm hopeful, but we don't know, that would specifically embed and pay for us to hire a data person to work in the police department, that that could be their full-time job to help us organize and pull that data so that we could do a couple of things. One, we could try to unpack these types of issues with some more clarity and devote the time and attention to it that it deserves. But another part of that grant was to utilize any mechanisms possible to understand what I would call neuroscience-informed operational readiness, right? Just a fancy way of saying like, how do people, how do human beings, which our police officers are, how do human beings become impacted by the things that they see on the job? And what do we need to do to have as healthy, and how do we support a police force that's as healthy as possible so that they're able to engage in high crisis, high stress situations in a way? And can we use data to understand how, not only how do we refine our process, but how do we support our people? So there's a couple of ideas around data and that we were interested in for funding. We're waiting to hear about back how some of that stuff has gone as well. But if, if budget was no question, we could do a million things. But I think that, like every part of government, that tends to be kind of where limitation is.
Yeah.
Can I add a follow-up question?
Sure.
So in terms of the data that we're already collecting, was there a recommendation to collect data differently or like to collect more data or not necessarily just backend outcomes, but also like front end?
I don't, not in a formal way.
Okay.
I didn't formally suggest that. I know in conversations, I'm always talking about data. The better predictors we can get and the more efficient we can become. I think you just want to be careful. I think there's, there's been a lot of conversation about how can we utilize existing data to understand not just policing practice as we fight crime as a community, but what are the implications of fighting crime on human beings in our community? You know what I mean? So, because it's, we're always going to need to negotiate that. I think it's a very common thing in criminology and in the study of criminal justice systems to try to figure out how do we, how do we make sense of autonomy, liberty, human flourishing, independence, whatever, and public safety in a collective way? There's, that's, those are tough questions. It's tough stuff to figure out. So I would love more data to help us do that.
Yeah, not to give more jobs to our officers on the backend and more paperwork, but you know, just thinking about where it makes sense to try to collect data that's going to be helpful for more information on the backend.
I don't want to push past this because I think people might have more questions around this one. I have tons of questions on it too. But I think one great return on investment as we look at more data is moving into some of that school resource and youth development, particularly youth diversion. And what does diversion mean? How are we already doing that? And how can we adapt practices without costing a lot of money and actually save money with that thing? So I think that data is pointing us in that direction, but I think this is something I tell students all the time and anybody that'll listen to me, like, science points us in a direction of truth, right? It points us that way, but it doesn't tell us all the answers. Like, it's kind of, one at a time, we want to keep using whatever we can learn to steer us in the right direction. And I think that one of those directions that we're seeing right now is that it's a great return on investment to try to figure out ways to divert youth. So, and we can talk about that a little bit more here in a few minutes if you want.
Yeah. So with the data, does it tell you things like the officers, about the officers involved in the use of force, incidents like their age, race, gender, things like that? And is there anything you gain from that? Is there a type of officer, older officer, younger officer, that impacts if they're more or less likely to use force? And against who, maybe?
Yeah.
And then, does it account for, does having more officers result in a increase in use of force just because there are more? And also, if, taking into account population growth of the city as well? So did you see a rise in use of force? And if so, does it account for population growth and we have, maybe have a few more officers or whatever it may be? And is it just Norman PD, not OU or Cleveland County, just Norman Police Department data?
So working backwards on a couple of those, this data was just the Norman Police Department, not OU PD or Cleveland County. We did have COVID in here in this cycle, which will have a shift in practice, right? As we reduce the amount of officer-initiated contacts and all that sort of thing. So I think acknowledging that that is part of the end of this data set that we'd be aware of. But at the end of the day, things like, we did control for officer age, years on the job, which I would suspect by reading the literature to have what you call kind of a curvilinear relationship, that there's kind of buy the book and then go and doing things and being more bold and then kind of settling into a career. We looked at officer race, gender, age, all those kinds of things and did not see that those variables had an influence. So at, now, at that point, that's good, okay, we didn't see that. Also, that now you have to guess or extrapolate as to why, because some of those things I would expect to see. So could that be that training initiatives are working well or that frontline supervision is creating consistency? Or that frontline supervision is creating consistency across the ranks? I mean, those things are possible. Could it be a fluke? Could be, be a fluke that everybody seems to act and behave in a certain way? But I would guess that it's probably some sort of a combo of the other ones. But we don't have data to really know that for sure.
And you mentioned that we were extremely, extremely rare to see use of force in Norman Police Department. So, but even though it's extremely rare, have you seen a rise in it based off of just our growth as a city, growth in the metro area? Oklahoma City's becoming a much larger city.
Yeah.
There are things like crime that come, come with that.
Oh, for sure. I didn't see that in the data, but that doesn't mean it's not true. I don't know for sure, but we didn't see any type of rise that would appear to be inappropriate. It was pretty consistent, roughly fifty-ish, sixty-ish incidents a year across five years. It'd be interesting to track that even more across a couple of decades cuz we could see a really significant population shift across decades and we could track it to see how it comes together.
Fifty to sixty incidents out of how many contacts would you maybe guess?
Oh.
Thousands, hundreds, tens of thousands.
Seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand calls a year.
For, for the, for the fighting?
No, that'd probably be for everything.
That's all, that's all our calls.
All calls we serve.
And I guess the last one I have is like, so groups that would be identified as there potentially being a disproportionate use of force, what, what reason is, are those groups committing more crime, three times more crime? Are they?
I would say that-
Is it just being reported three times more than other people may, other people may be doing the same thing and not being called?
I think it's a, it's a fair question. The data that I, as I understand it from decades' worth of work would be no. Studies empirically across time have shown us in the United States that there are not different levels of participation in criminal activity varying by race in the United States. That's, that would be pretty atypical.
And you mentioned that you're-
But we don't have anything in this data that would tell you for sure.
And you were former police officer, is that, would that be aligned with your experience?
That would be aligned with my experience. I was in the Little Rock metro and it's been a long time. So I think policy has changed a bit and the way that people follow along with, I mean, we're all able to watch what's happening.
Right.
Right.
I think that's changed the game in a pretty significant way and there's a burgeoning body of research that suggests that that's evolving kind of what happens.
And how use of force is-
Yeah, well, I think with anything, it, you, all of us in our lives are now kind of on the stage whether you wanna be or not. You can't be at a restaurant, having dinner, and somebody will see you. So I think those things have a pretty interesting impact and those are cultural milestones that I think are shifting in that you put that with some genuine, authentic need or kind of altruistic desire to improve and modernize and with rising pressure from the community. I think the community is saying pretty clearly over the past several years that we want to see equity in our public spaces and we're scared about that. And we're worried about what we see. And we see news from across the country and there are some pretty horrible things that we're watching happen to people every day. And I think that that community pressure and that ground swell of energy around wanting, you know, equity for everyone is, I think that's, that finds its way into our systems, our criminal, criminal justice system, our education systems, healthcare systems.
It can make it feel like maybe it's hard to compare it to previous times because a lot of folks will say, well, things that used to be able to get away with because nobody was recording anything and police departments maybe didn't use to keep the detailed accounting or reports that they do now or they didn't have the regulations that they do now. And so we don't really know what may have been happening twenty, thirty, forty, fifty.
I, yeah, I think there's a lot of truth in that. Like, I think that now, modern law enforcement agencies have to keep better records than they would have in the past. I do work with a partner, we have to keep better records of what's going on there than we would have in the past. Just cuz you can't, I don't wanna speculate, but like, you can't get away with stuff like you could have twenty years ago. And at the same time, we know that from an organizational culture standpoint that people don't talk about the things that they think others might disapprove of. So from a data place, it'd be really hard to compare what's going on now with what happened even twenty years ago, probably. But certainly anytime later than that, it starts, it's just apple. I think it's, the data starts to become kind of apples and oranges.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you still have a question?
Yeah, so I, I do want to acknowledge that Norman PD does have a lot less use of force than a lot of other cities in our, in our state, which makes me extremely proud to live here and proud that our PD really focuses on community and trying to set that standard within our state because I think that that's important. However, the data still shows and the numbers still show that it was three point four times more likely to be subjected to a use of force if you were black. Did your data show the same thing? Because it's all numbers. Is your, is your data the same data?
Oh, yeah. I can't dispute that, that particular metric from the CB report. That is, is there.
So to kind of follow along with what Councilmember Lynn was saying, are you able to disprove that race was the factor in your data?
I don't think the data can disprove that. No, can't, we can neither prove it nor disprove it.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, yeah.
Okay, and then just as a final follow-up about the youth diversion, I'm really curious to hear what you have to say about that once some of these questions are answered. But I would just like to go on record with saying that youth diversion would probably be better handled with social services than police communication. So I think that it starts with social services, starts at home, starts with community. The police should be a last resort for any type of youth diversion. Just wanna throw that out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
A little in line with that. So with the use of force that you were talking about earlier, are SRO data in that dataset? Like, it's all NPD, including SROs?
Yeah, yeah. So this particular dataset was derived specifically from the use of force reports for the police, the full police department. So if a use for, if an SRO data officer would have been in there, it would have been-
Disturbances and fights could also be data collected from schools then on use of force there?
So the, those were the calls to service. So if it was called into dispatch, then it could be that.
Okay, and what do you, what can you say from the data about the use of force in schools?
The use of force, now, the school resource officer data, and I think it probably is, if you're ready to transition, I can start to move into that space a little bit. So we've looked at that in a very preliminary way because there's just not as much of it. Started collecting it just a couple of years ago and looking at some really specific things. Primarily, what types of calls are we seeing? And what's happening when a young person is coming into police custody at a school? So use of force is not something that I have seen so far in the data for SROs at Norman Police Department. Right, so the, the data is overwhelmingly, when a young person comes into custody in a school setting with an SRO, it's most typically for mental health-type calls or other types of stuff like that. I think that we're looking at somewhere like, I mean, maybe like five arrests per year for criminal-related activities.
At schools?
At schools. Yeah, so the idea that, now, the police are there, they're interacting with young people, but when they bring youth into custody, it's almost exclusively for mental health-related and kind of custodial-type situations.
Are you, are you saying that you just were not provided the data for use of force on students? Or are you saying that the data provided to you by NPD says that there was no use of force?
I did not look at the use of force data and identify if there were specifically any school resource officers in that dataset. But I'm talking about two different datasets.
Right, so within the, the school resource officer data, they didn't provide if there was use of force in that dataset separate from the use of force data that we were just talking about?
It's not a variable that, in the pre-screening that I've looked at, I don't think it's in there.
I just, I wanna make sure that it's on record, that it's not, that it, there's not uses of force happening in the school because there is. I wanna make sure that that's clear and that it's just the data maybe wasn't given to you or that you didn't actually research that portion of the data.
Yeah, I wouldn't even, I don't know that I could say that the data wasn't given to me. It's just not something that we've had time to look at yet. I don't know if it's in there or not.
Okay.
The school resource officer data at this point has been very preliminary, just because of time. I haven't had time to dig into it to, with near the same nuance that we were able to with the use of force data. On the surface, kind of that first run of it is pretty overwhelming that it's not criminal charges that students are coming into the system.
Well, but you said they result in five arrests, right? Five to six arrests per year? But that's different than a criminal charge cuz you can ticket a child or give them some type of penalty where their parents having to take them to this municipal court, but they weren't arrested. And so that's still, to me, is, I mean, you're essentially giving a child a criminal record that way. So I'm really curious to hear about that data. Like, how many tickets are we giving to students? Are we giving to MPS students? How many? Do you have any of that kind of data or?
No, not at the moment, but I do know that that truancy-type stuff tends to go through the school system. And I have started working with, or at least meeting with-
I'm not talking about truancy stuff at all.
Citation-level thing. When we look, the data that I've seen so far is about when you, young people in school settings are brought into custody.
Okay.
So when a, so far, that's what I've looked at and when police officers have to have those children in custody.
Okay.
Pretty overwhelm, I won't say every time it's for a mental health or some other type of situation, but that's the overwhelming majority.
Yes, sir. Does use of force, um, does it necessarily equate, like, it doesn't arrest necessarily equate to a use of force?
Not at all, no. If, it's kind of a directional thing. If use of force exists, then you would almost always expect to have some sort of an arrest.
Right.
But an arrest does not equate to use of force.
So if, if an officer uses force for any reason, they're most likely going to arrest that person that they used force on in any circumstance, right?
Usually, that's in the data.
But not every arrest results or is reported as a use of force if it's combined.
It's kind of an extra, it's an add-on thing. Like, if, most of the time, there is no use of force, but under arrest, sometimes there is and if it is, it should be documented.
So if there's five to six arrests in MPS per year, would you say there is probably fewer use of force incidents than that or?
I would, I haven't seen, I haven't personally seen any in the, in the SRO data. That doesn't mean they don't exist. It doesn't mean I haven't seen them yet.
Well, I guess that's, I mean, a question of interest to know that. Just because it is a new program and, you know, people wanna know about that stuff. But it's, so yeah, I was kind of wondering about how that was different like that, whether, if there's five to six arrests per year, there's probably not more uses of force than that occurring by the police against students?
I would be shocked. I bet that's something I haven't, I can't say that we've specifically looked at it.
And is it, you said it does tell you the types of use of force too, I guess, so.
Yeah, the vast majority of the interactions that I've seen so far in limited capacity with school resource officer data are things that I would say really fit into that line of diversionary-type activities.
Councilmember Schuler.
Is the data that is collected with SRO program the same that is collected for, like, general calls? Like, that an officer would go out just in the general community? Is it the same level of information?
I believe there's actually even more specificity for an SRO-related call, but I wanna make sure, I would wanna double-check that. But I think they're actually even collecting some extra stuff if a school resource officer interacts with somebody. So there's the basic call information that you would have in the community plus an extra level of wanting to know more specifics about who the child was, what the type of interaction was, what the disposition was.
And do we know what the, who, who asked that for that? Was it like because the school district wants more information or was because, I'm looking at chief here, because of like the, like NPD wants to know more? Like, what, what was the?
We obviously want to know more as much as we can, as much as we can collect it. It's hard to get officers to click buttons, so sometimes we'll make it mandatory for, okay, you gotta click this to complete the report or not. But we collect the data based off the agreement with the schools on what they want to see. We collect beyond that also for our uses to try to make sure we're in line, looking at the national trends with, he can talk about that, that we're not in that line that is the pipeline to prison that causes a lot of those things. That we have diversion and like, Councilmember, they are, when they're written a docket, I just signed a deal with Crossroads today on the diversion there. So even if you get a docket, because, and some of these people that are arrested at the school are adults too. It's, don't think of it just kids, cuz there are adults in that group also. But they can be diverted through Crossroads. There's different diversions through municipal court now that we're trying to get up and running, diversion program within the court system. Deputy Chief's been more involved with it, but is trying to keep them out of that process and out of the system and out of our program if we can correct behavior other ways. We'd rather do that as, she was mentioning earlier. That is the, that's the way to go. That's the ultimate goal.
And Dr. McLeod, in, in our last conversation, when talking about where nationwide you have seen datasets that would lead you to believe that there are SRO school district relationships that do result in that school-to-prison pipeline, you talked about what, what goes on in those programs that doesn't happen in our scenario? If you'd highlight that, that was-
Yeah, so there's quite a body of research on kind of school-to-prison pipeline. I think, I wouldn't wanna put words in people's mouths, but I would hope that all of us in here don't wanna see that happen, especially in our community, but much less anywhere. And what they found, and there's a really great report that really just came out by the National Institutes of Justice that looked at lots of different school resource officer programs. There are a couple of common threads that tend to correlate with school police or school resource officer programs that do contribute to young people transitioning into the carceral system. And that is most usually focused when the school district and the police department are using the police and their presence in schools as part of the disciplinary cycle of the school. When there's a dependence on the police to kind of be the rule-enforcers inside the school. In those instances, it is murky, dangerous territory in all honesty. If we as a community want to avoid school-to-prison pipeline-type activities. Now, my understanding is that the agreement with Norman Public Schools is that the police presence is not to be part of the disciplinary process. And I think that's probably an important factor as to why our data don't seem to match some of those trends. What we would see in the national literature is that when school resource officer programs are successful and healthy, there's a really clear delineation between what the purpose of having that officer is and like why you have them there in the schools and that it's not disciplinary.
Councilmember Schuler.
Yeah, so students that are receiving like special ed services through, I guess, who, MPS, are they kept confidential, handled confidentially? Like, if they have interactions with SROs or not?
All of it is confidential if they're juvenile.
Okay.
Councilmember Stedley.
But are they reported in the, I guess, in the data?
Yes, they would be in the data.
Okay.
But-
But it's not identifiable to the student?
Oh, I would never see it.
Yeah.
I'm always the naysayer, so I, I do understand that the relationship with NPD and MPS is that the police are not to be- that the police are not to be used as a disciplinary process. However, you can't control people's biases, teachers, staff, faculty, and so they may use the police as the enforcer, rule enforcer, if you will. So I, even though our school system and police department may not have this as like a robust thing, that they don't constantly use the police for this, it is still happening in our school system, and it does still happen daily in our school system. And I think it's really prudent for maybe some people to go back and listen to some of those 2020 budget meeting shout-outs, if you will, or, or discussions, because during that, a lot of the discussion actually were more around SRO officers than anything, and a lot of it was talking about experiences that parents have had with police in our school system as well as school administration. And so I think that it's very important to really look at what we're doing whenever we are going on calls as the police to discipline students and make sure that we're not using the police for something that could be handled. Like, when we fought in school, we got suspended. We didn't get a criminal record because of it. You know what I mean? So I think it's really important to identify what are learning opportunities and growing opportunities for youth, because that's what we're doing. They're kids, they're learning, that's why they're in school, and, and know when it's appropriate to have police interaction and not, so.
I absolutely agree with that, and I think that it's imperative. I would say that a high, my opinion is that in this kind of low-hanging fruit area, this is a very, very important thing that we solidify, formalize, and continue to make very, very clear what the expectations are, codifying the role.
Yes.
Of how law enforcement interacts with schools and what schools should expect from those interactions.
Because I know, I'm sad that Officer Clement is no longer here, but she, or Clement, but I know that she, that was her big thing for her was that we're not here to enforce your discipline. Like, we're here to protect the school and the students.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I was just definitely going to confirm that back when the council in 2015 put this forward, public safety sales tax part two, permanent, the sequel, it, and created the SRO program, that the intent of the council then was that they were not going to be a rules enforcement, a school's rules enforcement, were not going to be used in that way. Chief, at the time, Chief Humphrey, that was part of his, I guess you could say, sales pitch to us about why we should create this program was that they're not going to be there. And that was a lot of questions we got from parents and, and concerned citizens was, are they going to be there to, yeah, enforce the school rules? And that the schools should be responsible for that to, you know, an extent still. And then, you know, concerns about officers being, are these going to be street patrol officers that are just going to work part-time in the school? And, you know, clarifying that these are officers, they're going to be specifically trained, may have been street officers, but they're going to be trained for this purpose. They're officers that want to work in this environment and setting. And that, part of it too was that NPS had its own police force before, and the pitch was we can have better trained personnel in there instead of, you know, what we, what they had at the time. And that if there's a crisis situation, these officers are better prepared and better trained to respond to it than what they may have had before. That was the intent and discussion back then, for sure. And so that, continuing that, you know, that role, I think is wise, I agree.
Yeah, I think it's wise. And whether that's the, the, it was smart on behalf of this group and leadership in general to make sure that that was explicit. Maybe it was just lucky, or we'll say it was wise. Like, I mean, it was really smart, right? That you make that explicit and that the school board and the school knows that's explicit, NPS knows, that the police department knows, so everybody sets the stage and expectations and boundaries going in. Because if that, I think that is a pivotal factor that you see in the research over and over again, the national research, that if that isn't there, then you start moving into dangerous space.
Well, I kind of view their role as definitely getting to know and build relationships with students, but securing the building.
Mm-hmm.
The building itself and keeping the people inside of it safe from whatever might try to come in.
And the thing.
And not necessarily going to each classroom and these two kids are arguing, and I want you, the SRO, break them up.
One of the things I talk about with folks around rethinking what public safety looks like, particularly from a concept of community policing, oftentimes, like, if your people trust you, they give you information way ahead of time. With every degree of trust that you lose in a law enforcement capacity, then it's a later response. You don't find out about the crisis until it absolutely has to be divulged, because people didn't trust you, right? And the same would happen from a security and safety standpoint with a good SRO program. Your job isn't the daily discipline, but being approachable in a way and being trained to be able to be approachable in a way that a young person can confide in you if they have a concern, that's very much a part of the safety and the kind of guardianship of this building that you want to see. And, I mean, we're watching around our country as schools are very susceptible. And I think that's on a lot of people's minds. So that relationship, though, is very much a part of the safety of the facility, if that makes sense. So we got to ask our school resource officers to both be bold in the way that they engage a threat to their school and have the training and time and investment to have really good relationships with the young people that are there so that they feel confident to share things. Yeah, I don't know. Kind of sub-boxing on that.
Councilmember Brandt.
I just need a little clarification on the arrest types. We were saying that it's adults and children. Are we still talking about a student population or are the adults in the school, either a parent or staff or somebody?
I would have to get the data right in front of me to know it, but I think, like, for example, like, last year, there might have been maybe three arrests on campus or something, or, and, do you know those data? I don't, I don't want to tell you the wrong data. I don't want to tell you the wrong data.
Three arrests, adults coming all year.
This is, this is not your meeting to inject into place on rally day.
I have the data, right here. You want to look?
So, but yeah, so like, three total, but a lot of the, like, adults from off-campus, not like an 18-year-old in the high school, is my understanding of how that's to be interpreted. But we would have to go, I would, I, I haven't had time to go in and like, look at reports or anything like that. It's a good question.
Councilmember Ford.
I apologize for being late. Um, I, I have been watching, and my question is, on the SRO policy, since we're partnership with the city, what part of the policy does the city get to write versus the school? So does the school say this is when we're going to utilize an SRO? Do we have a say? Or, no, we're not going to respond to those types of things. Where's our reach in that?
Our, our reach would be in the memorandum of understanding with the school system, I think, is where we would make adjustments on what we would do, which it's in there, on what we'll respond to and what we shouldn't. And it's like Councilmember Studdely was saying, there's, there's teachers and maybe new ones every year that have to learn. We, we don't deal with this type of stuff.
Right, pretty quick to pull the trigger, yeah.
But the MOU would be the place where we could make changes as the city with it.
When was the last time that was looked at, Catherine?
I think it was last amended in 2018. Is that something right?
Yeah, probably.
2018, 2019.
So that's something that we wanted, right. If it's something we wanted to look at and review and modify, we could do those negotiations with the school. Okay.
I think it's probably smart, or whatever, that, my opinion on that is.
It's four years later, we've had a lot of shootings and fun, maybe.
Like, this stuff happening across the country, you want to be paying attention to.
Ball day, I mean.
We're still, we're learning more. I mean, I think the knowledge base around the country and people trying to find creative ways to respond to these real problems can, from every different side and the complexity that they are, be smart to revisit those types of things and make sure you're employing best practices.
Councilmember Studdely.
I know, Chief Foster, I know that you said that the data with students is private, but we're obviously able to give some kind of data. So in regards to mental health, if there's a call for mental health, is, is there an officer response immediately? Do you guys partner with COCMH? How does that work?
Yes, all those. Generally, they do call us first if a child is in crisis and the counselor, they try things, I'm sure. Before we get there, if we happen to be there, we would intercede if it's appropriate for us to do. Otherwise, the school system would get them mental re, mental health resources outside of us. The way we would take somebody, if we could show that they were an immediate threat to themselves or to somebody else, that's when we would take them. Otherwise, it's a school, school counselor, they're going to deal with the mental health issues outside of those.
Well, I know, like, with 988, and they had came and did a presentation and said that with the youth specifically, that they were able to send out a mental health crisis worker with the police. So is that something that you guys are currently doing in the schools? Or if you guys get a call that a student is in crisis, is it just an officer out there by himself without?
Well, I think probably somebody from the schools there, but I don't know that there's a mental health worker that is, you know, unless the school's employing them, and I, I think that's where they do want to go, to have somebody there for that specific type of thing. I don't think there's anybody there besides, like, a counselor, not a mental health professional. It's us and a school representative.
Okay.
We've seen them working on some other projects with other local jurisdictions, particularly around co responding models. Again, it comes down to the money thing, to, like, to have the city to employ or the grant funding or a partner agency or organization to employ, to have people.
I'm sure federal funded that, so. I'd really like to see that in some type of, like what Councilmember Ford was talking about, with if we're going to review that policy, if we could.
I think we could do that.
Kind of include something like that in it.
I think our issue would come on the time of the response, how, how much time it takes them to get there.
Fair enough.
If they could respond reasonably, like, you know, it doesn't have to be as fast as we, we're there.
Well, they made it seem like in their presentation to us that they were going with officers on scene. Am I wrong with that?
They could go and send it, some of them, but we don't, I'm not seeing, I'm not hearing a lot of that. They may respond without us to some things. When they do feel they need us, they will call us. If somebody has called 988, but generally, I think they go on their own.
Okay.
Unless they think there's a, they feel their safety is concerned, then they may call us.
Okay.
But in the schools, I haven't, I haven't seen it, but it would, it'd be great. I'm all, I'm all for having them there, rather than us having to deal with it, so.
Councilmember Studdely, that would be just interesting data, as the 988 system is just newly born, to start figuring out in terms of calls for service, what kind of call volume they're seeing, and as the educational process continues, you know, what that expansion of calls for service looks like, you know, and how often does the police department get involved after 988's been called and 988 calls and requests our response? So I'll, I'll make that phone call tomorrow and, and start finding out where, where will data live on the 988 dispatch, because we know the kind of data we have to collect for the 911 dispatch center, and the FBI says you will collect this at a minimum. 988's nationwide now, so I'm kind of curious. Did, did they set standards for the data that they're going to collect? That's a very interesting piece.
More data for you.
Yeah.
Any, any other thoughts or comments? Well, thank you, Dr. Oh, did you have one?
Oh, no, I was waiting for him.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McLeod, for coming in and, and giving us such insight. I appreciate it very much.
Be glad to come back anytime and, you know, continue to work and do whatever we can to build a safer.
Doctor, perhaps, at, at a, maybe when you're going through your process, there are like logical points to say, oh, here's a nice line or a nice bundle of data that I'm going to go through. But, yeah, we would be open to a phone call saying, hey, I've got a, I got a thing to share. I don't want to bother you too frequently, but if there are naturally occurring opportunities in your research to say, this is worth bringing an update, I'd love to facilitate and get that scheduled at your convenience.
Absolutely. Yeah, the more we can all work together to, I mean, these are complex problems, and we got to find creative ways to get that on. So whatever we can do, I'm glad to share, and I have to appreciate that invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
We'll move on to item two, update and discussion regarding, regarding the purchase of 1210 West Robinson, possible acquisition of property located at 309 Norman Center Court. This is Catherine Walker.
It's actually going to be Anthony Turin.
Okay. Play it, Otis. Got to find it first.
John, could you take that out of there?
Sure. I just wish y'all would ask the questions, that'd be the answer.
All right. There he is. Fire away, sir.
All righty, so some updates on affordable housing. We've been busy last week. So 1210 West Robinson, just a brief update on where we're at in that process. We have started our due diligence period. That's 60 days is what we have to do that with a 30-day expansion if needed. We've completed some initial inspections and walkthroughs. We haven't gotten those reports back yet. They were, most of them were just walked through the premises last week. We did a city staff walkthrough on the 26th, so we have a bunch of people from our internal employees. So if they're specialized in HVAC for city buildings or something like that, we had those specialties come out from our own employees. They looked through the building. We had our environmental phase one assessment done. That was on the 30th of last week. We also had survey work that's being completed as of now. We are also awaiting estimates from asbestos testing vendors. We had a few vendors come out. Since the property was so big, we need to have them walk through the property before they can give us an estimate on what it will cost to test the property for asbestos. So that is something that we're waiting back as well, and we're likely going to be setting up follow inspections on the roof and HVAC systems, because those were identified as needing some additional inspection.
So just a, a quick note, the reason we are continuing this homework assignment is because the alternative site has not been secured yet, so we're on track until, and he'll get to that point too. So it's like, you gave us direction, but this is part of that direction.
So we're continuing as normal on that, but we were made aware of another alternative offer that was put into the property owner after they had already entered into a contract with us for purchase. And that was an offer by the Office of Veteran Affairs on the property, and they wanted to purchase it for the purposes of a VA hospital slash clinic to be operated in that, what was used to be a specialty hospital. So kind of giving you an overview of what we've been told, their proposed use would be a VA hospital or clinic, and it'd be, it'd make sense because that used to be a specialty hospital. They gave us some numbers, some quick specs. 90, they would have like a 90 to 100-day intermediate facility. I'm not sure what that means, but I think it's something like, you know, you can say 90 to 120 days. I think sometimes if it's a specialty hospital, you're released from, like, a hospital, and then you go to the specialty hospital for aftercare, and it's kind of like a transition to regular living. There's 25 to 30 community living center beds. I think that's like a nursing home type setup. They also have 25 patient residential rehab treatment, so that would be for, like, rehabilitation. I think, I don't know if that's substance abuse or what kind of rehab they're specifying there. That would be my guess. They estimated that about 150 personnel would be employed at this facility with a significant annual salary of $10 million for those employees. This would expand the service of the current VA Medical Center in Oklahoma City, so that gives them a little bit more reach. It would also free up some room at the Oklahoma City campus, I believe, for them to offer additional services and expand that capacity.
Rehabilitation in that is usually physical rehabilitation more than it is chemical or.
I assumed. And they have a, they have a pretty, they have a dedicated room already on site for physical rehabilitation that had pretty sophisticated equipment, so that's probably where that came in at. So that would make a lot of sense. So next steps, just this kind of gives you an overview of what we can do going forward under our contract. So we, under the contract, can terminate the contract at any time for any reason prior to the end of that inspection period. So that would be October 22nd. If we wanted to extend that period. extend that period, we could extend it to November 21st. We can, if we did that, we could still choose to terminate the contract within that time period. We will, that will allow us to keep the $25,000 of earnest money, as long as we do it within that date. So we would not lose any earnest money. We have, you know, engaged with vendors and stuff to do services for the property, like asbestos testing, phase one environmental. But if you guys decide to pass on this opportunity, and you think the VA hospital would be of better use, the VA has informally, they couldn't, you know, really enter into like anything formal, but they did say that they would likely be able to recover costs for the city that we've expended if we give up the contract in support of their use. So that would be something that they'd be able to hopefully cover. And we're also going to probably be able to receive all the inspection reports way before the time that we would need, so we wouldn't be, if you guys wanted to get those inspection reports before we made the decision, we could do that. We'll probably get them here pretty quickly. And then there's a new opportunity that presented itself. I think this may have come up at the council meeting. This is a new property that we were made aware of that's up for sale. It is a currently used as a hotel. It's at 309 Norman Center Court. And so just some background, it is listed currently for $3.75 million. It was built in 1995, so much more recent. The square footage of the building is about 10,000 square feet less than the current building at 1210 West Robinson at 30,000, but it has more rooms. It has 61 more rooms currently operable. And that means, okay, so there are only one, they're basically, if you want to look at it from an apartment complex standpoint, they're all efficiency units. So how we would have probably approached it when things shake out, if we, if you guys were interested in, you know, making this affordable housing, it would probably also consist of one-bedroom unit, so you kind of combine them, so you'd probably get about the same number of beds, about 40, and that would be like 20, one bedrooms, 20 efficiency. But it depends on architecture and stuff like that.
Were there any suites in there, or were they all truly just efficiency?
They were all efficiency.
Yeah, okay.
There is-
Well, there's one manager's apartment.
Was there any like ADA accessible units?
I think there were three.
They all are?
Um, yeah, they're, and the difference between the ADA accessible and the non-ADA accessible-
Door width.
I think they all had, they all had good door widths. The counter for the restroom sink, there were cabinets underneath it or shelves underneath it in the non-ADA accessible, and in the ADA accessible unit, you could wheel directly up to the sink.
Okay.
And we also talked about maybe the potential of changing out some of the tub facilities with showers that could roll in with, yeah, no barrier. But we thought that, yeah, this remodel would be substantially less invasive than the remodel to be undertaken at the hospital.
Lovely.
And it was built in 1995, which is, you know- No asbestos. No asbestos.
No lead-based paint.
So 61 rooms, but likely, like I said, it'd probably be lower when things shake out. It's been on the market for 18 months, so that's sort of promising for us in a way. And it is kind of a smaller hotel facility, and so that might be, that might explain why it's been on the market for so long. Here's a map of where this is located, because I'm not expecting you to know just by the address. This is over by Sam's Club and the library that used to be, I think, the Borders. So you see like it's kind of behind Charleston's and BJ's, and then it's in, and then it kind of goes in there.
It's got a bus stop.
Oh, it's like, you can see it like from the front door. It's great. And here's like an aerial photo, because I like those. I think that helps with the scale. And it's like within walking distance of Sam's Club too, which is nice. This is like way zoomed out, because what you see in yellow and pink down at the bottom, those are residential units. And the smaller parcels at the bottom, those are completed units. I'm not sure what the pink is. That's just unoccupied or undeveloped land. So it is, I think, the closest residential unit using Google Maps, which is not precise, is 1,100 feet away from the building itself. So-
You mentioned Sam's Club. Don't you have to have a membership to shop there?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Well, I know that it was said that there was a grocery store around there, so it's not really a grocery store that anyone can just access.
No.
Well, market always.
That's across I-35.
I just like Sam's Club, so that's why I said that.
Right. It's by a bus stop. Right, right, right.
So, and so it's not really close to any residential right now, and there is some quite a bit of undeveloped land around it, right behind it. Let's see. So where we're at in the process with this right now, we're currently seeking an appraisal. We have started that process. We, and how, we took a tour of the building today, and based on, I mean, we were very impressed with how well it was holding up. We anticipate a much smaller renovation estimate than 1210 West Robinson, just based on the condition the property is currently. It's currently zoned C2, so we would, it would also need to be rezoned, depending on what kind of use. It would depend on if we needed a spud or an RM6. You could all, since it's going to be rezoned anyway, you might as well do a spud, if that's something that, you know, is more attractive to the community. It's, I mean, it's really almost move-in ready. Like Darrell said, it's, the amount of rehab that you'd have to do, not even rehab, but just renovation that you'd have to do, is much less invasive. And most of, like, most of the facilities you need to live are already pretty much there, so that's nice.
That was my question with this, and I don't know, do the, everything inside of it, does it come with it? TVs, beds and everything? Wow.
Refrigerators, microwaves, and it is interesting-
I mean, you're saving beds right there, probably.
Well, we-
Or at least a good chunk.
Correct. The hospital facility, our challenge would have been, what do we do with the hospital equipment? We would have to find a way to get rid of it, and you'd hate to throw it away, because it was in great condition. This actually has furniture that you'd utilize immediately, and it's already there. So, yeah, no waste. We would see in this as a transaction, the right type of furniture, some homework with Karen Cannavan and Lisa Craig in terms of making sure we check all the boxes, to make sure HUD is warm and fuzzy with the Section 8 opportunity. We got to make sure we have all of the elements. We could see some pieces of the roof from the second floor, and the pieces we saw looked brand spanking new. So if it had hail damage, it got repaired very well. The outside of the building looked like it had been recently painted. It was, I was just really impressed with the level of maintenance that's been invested in that particular property.
Councilmember Tortorella?
This goes to Darrell. So the small renovation estimate, so what are we looking at renovating potentially?
There were a couple of suites that were set up with adjoining rooms, so those would be much more easily convertible to the one-bedroom units. In that scenario, you might take out one of the two bathrooms and convert it into a little more extensive kitchen. But, you know, the plumbing is already in it, so it's not a matter of saw cutting a whole bunch of the floor out. And, you know, the tub conversion to a shower, we were talking about maybe $6,000 a unit for that kind of conversion and all the tile work. But, yeah, we were thinking, you know, three to five million in Robinson. I bet you it's less than half that for this particular price.
All right, thank you.
Lisa, I have a question for you on the handicapped or ADA accessible bathrooms. Is four out of 61 enough?
Yeah, we would, we would look at the 504 ratios and things like that and determine the appropriate number of accessible bathrooms.
Because if we're in a remodel, and this is a time to make sure that happens. Councilmember-
And it does have an elevator.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Schuh?
So I see on this list, the no supportive services available on site, and this might be for Lisa too, what does that look like for other Section 8 housing? Like, how does that interface with regular, traditional?
It would be that if someone wanted supportive services, they are available in the community. And because of the configuration and the location of this, certainly the staff that was there would be able to link them to those services offsite and make sure transportation is available and things like that. It's just that the configuration really doesn't lend it the way the 1210 property did.
Right, so the extra square footage in the other building was really what we were utilizing, could be utilizing for the supportive services.
If the decision was to do this, basically, we would be using rooms.
So the onsite staff, so like the current offices in this facility would be used for like basically maintaining the units and managers and manager and all that kind of stuff. Okay, thanks.
That was my question on the no supportive services. Does it not have like a conference room or anything that could be converted?
It really doesn't. It's got one very, very small room that had some storage in it, and then the rest of it was the open kitchen, not really kitchen.
Breakfast area.
The breakfast area you see in the hotels like this, but there really was not any kind of office area except for right at the front desk.
Did have an indoor swimming pool that looked like it was being very well maintained, had an indoor fitness center, which looked like it was very well maintained. We talked a little bit about, is that a, is that a plus or a minus? And we thought, well, there are an awful lot of apartments all over Norman that have pools and fitness centers, and maybe it stays just fully operational as it is today. But those are decisions that could be made in the very near future if council decides to stay on this path.
So then my next question is, I think you had said there was like a manager suite or something, so would we have like an onsite super, like 24/7 live there to run it?
I would, I would think so. That was what, in the discussions with the Affordable Housing Corporation for 1210, that they felt that that would be, they would have an onsite staff person there 24/7 to deal with maintenance issues and things like that, blockouts.
Okay.
So- Councilmember Stubb?
Um, kind of backtracking a little bit, let's talk about used furniture. Is there any type of rules or laws, regulations that are HUD Section 8 about used mattresses? Because I know it used to be illegal to sell a used mattress, but I don't know what that looks like to-
Well, and it is because, you know, the prevalence of bedbugs-
Yes.
That, that we would obviously want to do a thorough inspection-
Okay.
On that to make sure-
That was my next question.
We saw no evidence-
Okay.
When we were there. And so that would need to be looked at. You know, it may be that, that some people coming in, they already have the furniture, you know, that, you know, certainly anything that is surplus, that once we've cleared it, for the lack of a better word, would be made available to various nonprofits and things like that.
And on that mattress piece, it is, well, and I don't know if there are special rules in Oklahoma, but when a large hotel chain, you know, an Embassy Suites is going to put in all new furniture, they'll sell a lot of their furniture to other smaller hotel chains, and it's new to the new hotel, but it was, you know, in Embassy Suites for seven or eight years. So that, that kind of furniture activity, I know, I watched that happen in California frequently, so I don't know if that's a federal standard or, but yeah, you're not supposed to put up just a mattress for sale on, you know.
I think a lot of it is, is the local places here in town, Habitat, Salvation Army, and things like that have shied away from donations of mattresses in particular because of the potential for infesting their whole operation.
Yeah.
So.
Surely they're dead after 18 months.
I mean, I like them.
It's still used.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's operational. I was shocked to know that it was 18 months because of-
Yeah, we're, apparently, we're not, we're not conscious of how that's marketed, because, I mean, there's not a big for sale sign out in the front yard or anything like that. It just must be for people in the, in the industry.
I'm thinking like, we got people calling, buying houses up for double the price, and we've got the SEC coming, and we have this whole hotel that's been sitting there for 18 months. I'm shocked that-
Well, stop saying it somewhere else.
With council's concurrence that, you know, one, we know we don't need lead-based paint and asbestos-
Yeah, sure.
Services. Don't think we need a roof, but we could begin those same types of due diligence efforts as soon as we get, you know, under contract. But, yeah, we would definitely inspect the roof, all of the mechanical HVAC systems. Right now, the laundry is set up, obviously for commercial scale, washing all the towels and all the sheets. That room could easily be modified just to provide laundry services available to all the residents on the property. And I think definitely much closer to move-in ready, probably shaved at a minimum six months off of the time needed to get more people, you know, housed. It was really in, in very, very good condition. So I am optimistic this can happen, if that's the direction council chooses to go.
If we are able to do that, I don't, I don't know how long it would take for us to acquire it, but just kind of thinking outside of the box, could we use that as a temporary emergency shelter before we start remodeling since winter is coming? Or is it not going to be able to be purchased that quickly?
It's have to rezone it.
By October.
Oh, we have to rezone and all, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, the-
90 days, dang it.
The space council owns is probably a much easier interim fix, and we are, I think we've got our first meeting with the food and shelter folks on the 8th.
Okay.
Thursday, whatever.
Yeah, Thursday, the 8th. So, and they've got a site proposed as well, so I think we're going to be able to clear that hurdle and make sure the, the challenge is met on the warming shelters of the current winter season.
I'm down for this.
Councilmember?
And this would still, like some of the, you know, like safety, controlled access regulations, is that still expected here, even though it's not the full like onsite services?
Yes, I think, you know, one of the elements where you typically want to transition from a commercial land use type to a residential land use type would be the installation of a block wall. And from the aerial, you could see, yeah, you could provide wonderful separation. It's got, I think, adequate parking for all of the residents, and it was designed, you know, specifically in the assumption that, you know, basically just going from a transient population residing there to a permanent population residing there, there are opportunities for additional security, you know, cameras and door locks and all those types of things that I think would make it just a very safe environment for residents and guests alike.
So would we anticipate onsite security there in addition to a super?
The question I think would be to, like Karen Cannavan, to say, tell me about security measures at any of your other properties. And I think they have management, but they don't have security, because they really don't have more calls for service than any other apartment complex in town.
Right, right. Okay.
Any further discussion? Do you have any further slot? Okay.
I do, I am just concerned about lack of any type of case management or supportive services. Is that something we could possibly re-get some?
You know, I think that what we're looking at, excuse me, with this particular site, is an affordable housing project.
Okay.
Obviously, if someone wants to engage in case management, the staff that is there will do everything they can to get them linked to those services-
Okay.
That, that already exist within the community. I think that we're looking at, because of the scale of this is a little different than 1210.
Gotcha.
Where we're looking at, at more one bedrooms and lesser studio-type apartments.
So this may be more where we'll have, even though it may not be onsite, just a lot more like kind of COC, here are all of the partners and what they can do for you. Could we have like a day where they go like once a month or something?
Well, and certainly as part of, what we can do as part of the orientation for the tenants, make, make them aware that these, these services are available if they desire, and here's how we can assist you in, in linking with those services. Instead of kind of, you know, with, with 1210, we were, we were so new into the process, we really didn't know what that was going to look like. Certainly, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel with what was already going on in the community. And, you know, and it could be that, that we didn't know what the need was going to be.
And you have like-
And we're talking about a smaller scale here, so I think that, that, you know, to me, the big piece is the housing piece.
Yes.
And making sure that everybody is aware of the services that are available if needed.
And currently, like, the housing team, I know this from working with them at like Community Center for Okla-
COC MACH?
I can't get the acronym ever. They, they have like a new program where their housing team actually, when they get someone housed, they have site visits.
Okay.
Yes. And so like, some of that's already implemented, and those wraparound, you know, those services, so.
Cool.
And it wouldn't be hard, I don't think, to have an add-on. I'd not look- And it wouldn't be hard, I don't think, to have an add-on, I'm not looking back at the footprint, if there's enough room on that pad still, to be able to put a larger room or a set of rooms or something like that, that because it's flat and it's easy, whatever, whatever code allows.
Yeah, and it could be even the conversion of some existing space. You know, and it may be worth, they decide two rooms would be converted and used for another purpose, but...
Conference room or something?
Yeah, the conference, you can tell when they built it, the design was, oh, we will have a conference room, and I think it, it just wasn't big enough to be a viable conference room, and so it's full of storage. But, yeah, still square footage inside.
And you might not need a continental breakfast. Might be able to be converted.
So just about, I guess, any idea of how we would like to see partnerships or, you know, bringing in programming or something like that, that could be written into an RFP, correct? Potentially with like whoever is going to manage the facility, or no?
Certainly, yeah.
Just kind of an expectation of we'd like to see partners and programming for... Yeah, something like that.
I know Catherine had described, and it, it fit in my brain when she first said it. There is the Norman Housing Authority and the Norman...
Affordable Housing Corporation.
The ability to enter into relationships with those entities is almost an automatic. They are, I mean, they are here for that purpose. They are nonprofit, quasi-governmental, I think, in those respects. And I know when Karen Canavan paid a visit to the property before we went, and her response was she was very excited about the opportunity based on what she had seen. So it, you can probably approach it from a couple of different ways, and it could be sitting down with the housing authority to say, let's talk about how we think this project could be managed. I know Lisa and Karen could put together the pro forma to say, based on this number of units, we think it would generate X revenue, and we think based on what we see in terms of the building's current status, that, you know, you'd be able to cover the landscape maintenance and, you know, the maintaining the pool and all those kinds of things, and here's what the cash flow would look like. So they put a similar set of numbers together on the hospital project. I think this one is a little cleaner just based on the current condition of the property, but that may be a great place to start, to ask Karen to put together those numbers, and what does the cash flow look like on this property developed out? That may be a great place to start.
So I guess, right now, you're asking for direction?
We have requested an appraisal based on council's last special session last Tuesday. What, when did we have that?
Our executive.
Yes, executive, thank you. It's been a blur. It'll probably take three, maybe four weeks in terms of getting that appraisal turned around for us. The, the real estate broker and the manager, they're wide open to sharing whatever information is necessary. And, you know, during that time, our, our effort at the Robinson Street, we will still continue. That's not wasted effort. It would just be transferred over to the VA. What we can do is promise to just keep you posted when we hit a milestone on either one of those to report back to council and get you on the very next Tuesday.
Do you need an affirmation to proceed?
If there is council confirmation, we're on the right track. That just lets us sleep well at night.
Is anybody opposed? There's your affirmation.
Excellent. Council much appreciated, and we, you know, we've had this conversation at the staff level. You know, sometimes it's better to be lucky than good, and maybe we really got lucky the way things may fall in the line. You could, one, create 150 federal jobs here in Norman, two, add more, more housing stock than originally anticipated, and then savings invest in more affordable housing, so we don't know why these things happen the way they do. We're just grateful that you are, are open to letting us bring you last-minute crazy phone calls that we get on a Friday, and on Tuesday, you guys are able. That's what makes local government successful is because you can be nimble, and there's nothing nimble about the federal government. They're just not.
And we've got, it'll be shorter time, so less...
Winner winner for everybody in need of affordable housing.
Anyway, we are a jerk.